We will rejoin our meeting, previously scheduled meeting. We'll move to City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 31st, 2023. And we'll start off with recognitions to my far-right acting Mayor Middleton Hope.
Happy Halloween.
Happy Halloween from all right. Councillor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. It's been fabulous October. I can't believe the number of things that have been going on. So first, I'd just like to thank Build and the Lethbridge Construction Association for bringing in Markham Hislop, who did an amazing presentation on energy transition and Alberta business. Unfortunately, there weren't a great many people there, but I do have the PowerPoint, and I have to kind of share it with everybody here because it was a phenomenal presentation. I also took the opportunity in October to attend online resilience builders information session, which was offered through Alberta Emergency Management Agency. Amazing information in this presentation as well, talking about the emergency list that you should have at home and what you should have packaged together. Again, haven't had a chance because I've been doing so many of these to put some of this together, but I absolutely will. This one, I know councillor Schmidt-Rempel and I attended, and she'll probably speak more about it, but on donut economics and how that is being used by some municipalities in developing their plans. I was also fortunate enough to attend the Southern Alberta Women in Business, where they invited me in to do stories of women entrepreneurs in Lethbridge history, a great organisation that does a lot of work in our community. And because it is Halloween, just a shout out to, and a thanks to Edith Cabell, Mike Mountain Horse, and a few other groups that had me in to do storytelling throughout the month. Always have fun doing that. And also a shout out to our administration and to the public who helped us on and attend the community conversation on the 23rd. It was phenomenal to be able to see all the projects that the city is working on, and I hope the community members who were there had a chance to ask lots of questions and discover a great deal. I don't think people realise, I mean, with all the different departments we have, how much work is continually happening in this city on such a wide range of activities. And I'm sure there is more, but I'll stop there.
All right. Councillor Palladino.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if this person has been recognised in the past for the work that he does, but it's worth repeating if he does, or if he has. Mr. Stan Adamus is a dedicated adopt-a-part volunteer. The space he chose to adopt may surprise you. It's our cemeteries. In the early mornings before work, Stan can be found at either Mountain View Cemetery or St Patrick's. To date, he has volunteered over 2,000 hours, completing over 215 significant improvements. This includes ground levelling, monument levelling, cleaning, restoration, and flower planting. Spending so much time at the cemetery, Stan knows which graves have regular visitors. And for those that don't, he will often leave a rose and say hello. So I would like to give a huge thank you to Stan Adamus for your time and dedication to our cemeteries.
Well, thank you very much for that. Councillor Parker.
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
Nothing? All right. Councillor Dodik? Councillor Campbell? Or Dipu Mayor Campbell?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it. And just so you know that I am dressed up as City's counsel.
City's counsel.
Like a lawyer, like Mr. Lowen, City's counsel. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm here all, I'm a member for a couple of hours. Anyway, you know, I talk about this all the time because I'm totally absorbed into the show that I'm doing at with Lethbridge Musical Theatre, the Full Monty, which starts running Wednesday through Saturday. But it's just, Lethbridge Musical Theatre is trying to regenerate. It's been around since 1964, and it's so great to be involved with people who are amateurs who do this for the love of doing theatre, and there's so many people that have put so much work into doing the show. So I really appreciate it if people would still come, should be 14 and over. It's fun that way. But it also, what's also really cool is of the nine shows, there's a cameo performance by one member of the community each show. And on Sunday?
Sunday.
Sunday. Mr. Carlson came in and played the role of a sleazy bar owner, so he did it fantastic. So I wanted to thank him, and I appreciate anybody who wants to come to the show. Thank you.
Next to the sleazy, what was it now? Councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councillor Campbell. I did get to see a little bit of the show on Sunday, but I'm looking forward to, we've got tickets on Thursday night. From what I saw, it's a great show, so I hope folks get out to see it. I'd also like to send a little shout out to another friend of ours in theatre, Dave Mikulak, organised an event, I think yesterday, last night, singing for the, singing for our soup kitchen. Dave Mikulak and Bente Hanson on piano entertained folks. They had a bunch of special guests, and they raised several thousand dollars for our soup kitchen. So a big shout out to those folks and all involved. Thank you.
Councillor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to all of the winners of the Lethbridge Chamber of Commerce's Business Awards held on October 19th. And also a reminder to everyone to register for the 2023 Women's Conference entitled Bold Moves from Bold Conversations. That's being held on November 22nd and 23rd. As mentioned, I had the opportunity to attend Imagine Lethbridge's Donut Economy Session. It was a great learning opportunity, and I would certainly encourage my colleagues to check out Imagine Lethbridge's Facebook page for a link to the presentation, or if you'd like, councillor Croson or I could send that link out to you. Also, a shout out to the staff and community groups that participated and helped organise the City of Lethbridge's October 23rd Community Conversation, and thank you to the residents who participated. We rely on you to attend and on your valuable feedback to help shape this city. And just a reminder for everyone to be safe tonight as you are out trick-or-treating. Thank you.
Well, this does, as I'm checking off things here, thank you for that Chamber of Commerce Business Year Awards. They were great. Had the opportunity attending that. Full Monty this week. I'm going to be able to check that one out. So Mark B. on full, no, actually, all right, on that one. Community Conversation, thank you for that as well. And I had the opportunity of attending Rotary Club's Evening of James Bond out at our new Agrofood hub. And what an incredible facility we do have there. And the event, it was, it was amazing. Well done by the Rotary Club, and shout out to them and the work that they do within our community, because it was, it was definitely second on the event, and a lot of dollars were raised at that event. Also, I had the opportunity to take back the night, the YWCA Walk with councillor Croson here, I guess it's been about a week ago then, right? We are on that walk. What a great opportunity to, to be on that walk and, and what that stands for. So thank you, councillor Croson. Appreciate you being there as well. And with that, we will move on to the adoption of the agenda. Be resolved the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on October 31st, 2023 be adopted as amended, and there's a 14.1 City of Lethbridge Strategic Plan for Section 24 that will be added. Is that all that needs to be added, Mr. City Clerk?
Correct.
All right. With that, acting Mayor Middleton Hope.
Yes, I'll call for both then.
Of course, it's been called. All in favour? That's Kerry. Thank you. And we do have in the agenda, if there's no objection, we'd like to do two changes, or one change, swap two resolutions that are coming forward, 6.2 and 6.1. We will move first with 6.2, if we could, and that's from councillor Dodik. Do I have any, any problem with having those swapped around? It's okay. All right. From councillor Dodik, unsafe and dangerous properties. We do, oh, don't have it out there. I will quickly read through it here. Whereas sections 545, 546 of Municipal Government Act of Alberta, RSA 2000 CM26, provides municipalities with authority to make orders directing landowners or occupiers to, occupiers, to, among other things, remedy dangerous conditions that may exist on real property located in a municipality. And whereas the Bylaw 5747, a Bylaw of City of Lethbridge to regulate minimum property standards, permits the City of Lethbridge to direct remedial orders to landowners of occupants of land located in Lethbridge, subject to section 545 and 546 of the MGA, regarding the required maintenance of buildings, other structures, and internal vacant land, and any land adjoining buildings or structures to ensure this property is kept in good repair as defined by the bylaw, as well as to ensure they do not constitute a safety hazard. Whereas there are a number of buildings, structures, and other lands, whether occupied or unoccupied, in the City of Lethbridge, that are potentially unsafe and dangerous to the general public. Therefore, be it resolved that council direct administration to compile a list of the properties located in Lethbridge, whether residential, commercial, industrial, or vacant lands that may be unsafe and/or dangerous, which may be potentially subject to an order allowed by sections 545, 546 of the MGA and Bylaw 5747, and provide recommendations for steps or measures that may be taken by the City of Lethbridge to address the safety issues or concerns that may be identified, and identify any funding or resources that may be required. And last, report back to council by the end of Q4 2023. Councillor Dodik.
Yes, thank you for accommodating my request to move this up. I have a medical appointment, not a psychiatric one, a medical appointment scheduled very soon. The genesis of this motion was, well, in talking with Director of Community Services, and the fact that we've had occupiers of commercial buildings in Lethbridge, there's two that come to mind that had occupants and started a fire and caused significant damage. It's been brought to my attention that there are other buildings, both residential and commercial, that may not be as secure as they should be, and that may create a potentially unsafe or dangerous situation for other residents. So in a lot of ways, the whereas is pretty well explained what we're directing administration to do right now is just basically to compile a list, provide recommendation, and of course, I didn't write any funding, so we're not approving any funding at this point, just a report will come back. And if anyone has any question on the end of Q4 2023, that was done in consultation with Director of Community Services, and they tell me that they can meet that time schedule. Nod yes, please? Yes, thank you. She has a nod yes. So it's self-explanatory, other than the additional remarks that I made.
There are 61 questions in here. We will get started with number one.
Yes, yes, no, 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 yes, maybe.
Actually, councillor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, councillor Dodik. If I can, through you, your worship, to either the mover or administration, or city manager or designate, I'm just wondering how the list will be compiled? Is it something that our staff will solely do, or will it be complaint-driven? Or I'm just, we've got a lot of residences and a lot of, going door-to-door doesn't sound very intelligent, or a good use of time. I'm just wondering how the list will be compiled? Is it based on well-known properties, or is it complaint-driven? Or are we actually visiting 42,000 addresses before the end of the year?
Yes, I, councillor, Dwayne Insurgatory Services. We be working with FIRE on this. We do already have a list of houses that our department is working on. FIRE has indicated there's some other concerns, and we want to see if the lists are the same. So we're going to be compiling the list from some of the stuff we're already working on, some of the concerns we've already had, and then getting some other information from other departments to add to the list.
Okay. So thank you. So it's not going to be a big proactive, or proactive, but it's not.
I think that the bylaw's been in use for a decade, right? So clearly, this isn't, it isn't new for our department to be able to tackle minimum property standards or unsightly properties using a couple of different documents. What is new is the request for a compiled list of properties that we may not be aware of, so that, and there are new factors that we need to consider. I mean, we need to consider our partners in FIRE, and our partners in community and social development. So we'll meet with those people. We've already started working on a compiled list with the FIRE department, and we'll continue to use the information that we have, look at the information they've provided, look at what community and social development is looking at, and try and put that all together.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I do have one point, sorry. The city solicitor just pointed out, or legal services director pointed out to me. When we were asking staff to look at this, we've got a number of projects on the go, and staff indicated whenever they have different departments compiling things, it makes it a little difficult. The last council meetings, I think it's December 12th, which means we've got to get things in, I think it's about three weeks prior, we were just wondering if we could move this to the beginning of Q1. It would just, it...
Friendly amendment taken. All right. If there's no objection?
Sorry about that. It's just, it's, we've got a lot of stuff on the go, and I just don't want to stretch out everything going forward. Thank you.
All right. Councillor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. I thank councillor Dodik for bringing this forward, but I also look at this with a different eye. Even though this is well-intentioned and it's often necessary, I also know historically here and across Canada, we lose historic properties when things like this done, because sometimes that's what shows up in your list. Or it affects people of a lower socio-economic, or like, there's all these lenses that could be affected. We might be doing something in regard with safety, but we're creating then more homelessness. So how will those play into your list? Will you, will those be in any way a concern? Will they be an employee part of the recommendations? How will those be addressed as the list is being created?
Yes. On this particular work, we do, are very cognizant, I believe, of individuals in some of these houses. There are some that are dealing, we're dealing and working with the hoarding committee on and the like. So we're going to be very circumspect about some of that. We're going to have discussions, internal discussions, whether we put addresses on this list for public consumption or not. There's a number of issues that we're going to discuss when we sit down at the initial meeting. But, but we do take that under consideration. We do, some of these individuals in some of these houses are in certain situations that are very difficult, and we have, at least from our department, have, in many instances, got them in touch with social services and hoarding committee and the system in that respect. So there's different kinds of properties, and, and yes, you're quite, quite correct in the fact that there's some individuals that we need to handle with a little different care.
And will you be reaching out to Historic Places Advisory Committee if, you know, you come up with a list of buildings that you go, hmm, these might be historic properties?
We certainly could review that, yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Higgin.
Acting Mayor Middleton Hope. And for debate. All right. It's self-explanatory. Debate's been opened by councillor Dodik prior to leaving, so if there's anything, add for debate, starting with acting Mayor Middleton Hope.
Good. Thanks very much. I think the motion that was brought forward during budget, which was to increase parking fines, is an ongoing review, which would support financially this initiative, among others. But it was designed to enhance our regulatory services and risk management, and I know Mr. Palmer has been working on this project for some time. Those fine revenues could go to this important project to resource an examination of derelict properties across the city. Along with our new scan unit, another initiative that I've worked on, we will greatly improve the city's response to the use of vacant, abandoned, derelict, and criminal activities on properties in our city and region. So I look at it from a different lens than just simply looking at properties that are currently derelict or potentially abandoned in terms of displacing people that might otherwise not have a home. I look at it from the perspective of the scan unit, where we have criminal activity occurring in many of these abandoned properties. So I support councillor Dodik's motion, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Councillor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. I will be supporting this at this point, but I will be keeping an eye on it. Last, in last couple of weeks, when we weren't keeping an eye on something, we lost a historic element in Lethbridge that, you know, was taken out in sidewalk repairs, and that can never be replaced. So I will be keeping an eye on this because there's much more to this. I do like the answers to the question, that we will have these things considered. And I said, this is well-intentioned. It, in many ways, is necessary, but we have to think of all the unintended consequences as we move forward on this. So seeing the list, seeing where this goes, I'm absolutely prepared to support that at this time, but I think we just need to make sure that we do it in a thoughtful manner when we get the list.
Thank you. There has been a lot of great discussion around the table, and I couldn't agree more. Councillor Croson, there's, I know, being part of Lethbridge Housing, we've, we run into some similar concerns of, of, you know, with these types of properties, but I was glad to hear that we do work with CSD and make sure that we do have some of those supports there, if it's for hoarding supports or whatever, to be able to help through this process. So thank you for bringing that up, and I will be supporting this. And as I look down, I think a question's been called. All in favour? Kerry's. The first time the mover didn't get, but that's good. It's fast. We'll let him, yeah. We'll move along to 6.1, Childcare Needs Assessment, from councillor Schmidt-Rempel. Whereas council is committed to encouraging and attracting additional childcare spaces throughout the community to promote social and economic vibrancy, and whereas increasing the availability of childcare spaces in Lethbridge is critical to supporting working parents and stimulating economic growth by allowing more individuals to participate in the labour force, and whereas quality childcare facilities positively impact early childhood development, prepare children for future educational success, and contribute to the overall wellbeing of the community, and whereas a report generated by the City of Lethbridge administration identified a gap of approximately 600 childcare spaces in the community as of 2023, whereas municipalities across the country and the province of Alberta have taken specific steps to incentivise and develop the development of new childcare spaces for the general benefit of the community, therefore be it resolved that council direct administration to complete a childcare needs assessment for the City of Lethbridge by Q2 2024, which shall encompass in-depth background search through analysis and benchmarking and current childcare landscape, key stakeholder engagement, and formulation of recommendations to address challenges related to increasing the number of childcare spaces within the city. And number two, approve the allocation of up to $25,000 from council contingencies to fund consulting resources to support the development of an outlined childcare needs assessment. And to open for questions, are there any questions on this? Councillor Schmidt-Rempel, if you wanted to open it?
I did have a question. And then we have questions.
Excellent.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This resolution was born out of an information update regarding Phase Seven of crossings we received earlier this year from Opportunity Lethbridge. In that update, it was outlined that two residential lots at the northeast corner of Halifax and Abitibi Roads West were identified and set aside as suitable for neighbourhood childcare facility. This was a proactive step taken by our administration to identify and dedicate an area within the residential portion of the crossings community for the development of a childcare facility. Further, and in that update, administration indicated that a resolution could be brought forward to instruct administration to conduct more detailed research and provide recommendations for addressing challenges related to developing opportunities for more childcare spaces in the city, and that's what I'm doing here today. The information in the motion clearly speaks to the benefits of having the opportunity for quality, affordable, and accessible childcare in our community, should a caregiver choose. However, in addition, and anecdotally over the past year, I've heard from community stakeholders supporting newcomers to the community, YWCA representatives, Lethbridge College representatives, student representatives at the University of Lethbridge, Lethbridge Chamber and Economic Development Lethbridge representatives, the lack of childcare and affordable childcare in our community may be preventing caregivers, those who are largely women, from accessing English language learning programmes, educational, and employment opportunities, that a lack of childcare opportunities could be creating a barrier to access for other opportunities and services for many in our community. Also identified by the provincial government, there is now a focus on building capacity in licensed childcare with the Space Creation Grant that will help enable up to 68,7,000 total new licensed spaces to be created by 2026. Further, the Alberta and Canadian Chambers of Commerce have recently put forward policies calling on the Alberta and Canadian governments to ensure adequate quality childcare spaces are available for caregivers, further setting the stage for more caregivers, again, particularly women, to re-enter or enter the workforce. Our Lethbridge Chamber of Commerce was ahead of the pack, identifying this as an issue in its own local policy, the economics of childcare in 2020. We know generally that many neighbourhoods in Lethbridge are home to young and growing families, and that there is a need for easily accessible childcare in those neighbourhoods. Also, 2021 census and 2022 childcare spaces data shows that the city is currently about 600 spaces short of the minimum number of childcare spaces that should be available to the community. In-depth background research, thorough analysis and benchmarking of the current childcare landscape, key stakeholder engagement, and the formulation of recommendations to address challenges related to increasing the number of childcare spaces within the city offers city council the opportunity to make an informed decision and identify any gaps in the needs of residents who required childcare services, and will allow us to make a data-driven decision on how to move forward in a proactive manner in addressing identified challenges related to childcare spaces in the city. And with that, I will entertain any questions from my colleagues.
Councillor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, councillor Schmidt-Rempel, for bringing this forward. I think it's, it's important and work that is very needed and useful through you, your worship to city manager or designate, funding source. Couple of questions. Couple of questions on that. Council contingencies, do we have $25,000 left in this budget cycle?
To members of council, to Councillor Carlson, yes, there is still remaining $118,000 and a little bit more inside of that fund.
Thank you. And further to that, I know that our FCSS funding did see a bit of an increase in the provincial budget. I'm just wondering if we look through that lens, if this is something that could be funded under the FCSS funding agreement with the province? I'm just not sure if that's the appropriate one, or if those funds, I know we're about to make another allocation from our FCSS if we, I think we skipped over the consent, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did. So, I know that in the consent, we are going to be contemplating some allocations from that, but I'm just wondering if, I know sometimes we have unexpendanted allocations in there, if that's an appropriate funding source for this.
Through members of council, to Councillor Carlson, I think, one, we'll just need to go back and take a look at the eligibility side of that. I believe just recently, there might be some funding pieces coming forward, but I think the best thing is that we could bring that forward at a later date. If we think that's feasible, we would switch out between the funding sources. So, at this stage, it might be good to proceed as recommended, and then we could take a look at the grant side on the back end.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Acting Mayor Middleton Hope.
Thank you. So, this question is to the mover. Councillor Schmidt-Rempel, you've indicated in your motion a request to approve the allocation of $25,000 from council contingencies to fund consulting resources. Although earlier in the motion, it talks about the City of Lethbridge conducting the needs assessment, so how do you see a consultant, and this may not be a fair question, because it may be administration's question, but how do you see where we're asking the City of Lethbridge and our people to conduct either a thorough analysis or thorough analyses of this potential problem, and yet we're asking to fund a consulting, or outsourcing a consulting resource? So, can you just kind of provide some groundwork for that, so that I have a better understanding for what we're really asking here?
And directing, when we request to direct administration, or when we request the city manager to direct administration to do something, they may look at it and decide that they need a consultant, which is why it says an allocation of up to $25,000 from council contingencies. It may be that administration or the city manager directs administration, and together they decide that they don't need to hire a consultant, but this gives us the opportunity to provide a consultant or hire a consultant, should our city manager and our city administration decide together that that's, in fact, what needs to happen.
Okay. Thank you. Question then to Mr. Bradley and/or any persons that you may so choose to respond. Childcare, primary responsibility, obviously, is parents, and secondarily would be school boards, but the province and the federal government have a financial responsibility in this. Where are they involved in this particular initiative?
Ms. Slovak's had considerable involvement in this, so I'll defer these questions to her.
Good afternoon. Thank you.
You're on.
So far, we know the province of Alberta has announced some funding through a childcare creation space grant, space creation grant. The grant was recently adjusted as well to allow for-profit daycares to take advantage of it, so it's around trying to create more spaces in different communities, and there are different thresholds for the dollar value per space created based on the community and whether it's in what they call a childcare desert or not. So, we know that it is a priority for the province to try to create more spaces, and I think for us, it's really getting a better sense of what are the struggles that childcare providers in Lethbridge are facing, beyond just funding, maybe there's other things such as zoning or different financial impacts, so we just want to get a better sense of that, so that we can understand how we can help support them.
Okay. And does your area have the capacity to conduct this?
Not currently. It would require a shift of priorities in our department to do this without the support of a consultant.
Okay. And where is it on your list of priorities?
I guess it would be up to council to tell us if it's a priority or not.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Actually, before, if I could ask a question quickly. So, I see that Minister Turtin was sent forward with a mandate letter to, and they had added $28 million of this childcare, this is what you're talking about, correct, of the childcare expansion? Now, in addition to that, looking throughout communities where they could better use these, you know, allocate these dollars, I guess my question is, as you're working through this, is this not that same work, or no?
Sorry, I'm not understanding.
This resolution here, like, you've seen this mandate letter, and you've seen what, and you've got the understanding of what's happening with the childcare within our community, these dollars, is this not work being done by the province already?
It is, but I think we're wanting to complement that work, to see how we can sort of pave the way or make it easier for childcare providers to access that funding and grow the number of spaces in Lethbridge.
Okay. So, it's not to fund them, it's to help find the space, and then that province comes in as their, as in their mandate? Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, we can open debate. Councillor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Ms. Slovak, for answering some clarifying questions. And just again, this is, we've seen that this is a priority for the province, we've heard that this is a priority for a number of community groups, and this will give us a better sense of what providers need assistance with, or what other potential providers might be out there to step up and offer childcare service. This complements the work that's already being done by the province, and without an in-depth look into this, we won't accurately know how to position ourselves. This will give us some solid research and enable council to make data-driven decisions on how to move forward with a proactive, within a proactive manner for addressing challenges related to developing opportunities for more childcare spaces in the city. And with that, I would ask for council's support.
Councillor Croson.
Thank you, Councillor Schmidt-Rempel, for bringing this forward. I will absolutely be supporting this, and I hope my colleagues will as well. I attended a very interesting discussion on this at the Alberta Municipalities Conference, and several communities were looking at it, and with the understanding that, yes, there's a lot of, a lot of this is provincial jurisdiction, but the impact it has on the local economy, particularly if you don't have appropriate childcare, because you are keeping workers out of the workforce, and it's a huge economic driver if we can have appropriate one. The other thing we know is, appropriate childcare in your community can actually help decrease poverty, and with Lethbridge having one of the higher poverty rates in the province, this is something we should absolutely be looking into. Never mind what it can do for individual families, encouraging socialisation and all of that for the kids. Now, we might be considering, you know, the role, and I know this is going to be looking at that as well, but it could be anything from, you know, we're looking at land banking for social needs, so it could be from land banking perspective, we're looking at our land use bylaw, it could be zoning. I know many of you sat on our previous municipal planning commission, and I was astounded how difficult it was to have a conversation with people about putting daycares and childcare into their neighbourhoods, something absolutely essential, but perhaps we can just look at our land use bylaw moving ahead and ensure that that is a necessary thing. So, there are so many ways that a municipality can positively affect childcare, so I'm glad that we're looking into this, and I hope my colleagues will support this.
Yes, thank you, Councillor Schmidt-Rempel, for bringing this forward. I too will support this. It's, definitely works in line with the dollars that have been already put forward in a mandate letter from the premier, and it's a focus of this government, federal government, provincial government, and I think it should also be a focus of ours in any way that we can help support this, so I will be supporting it. Anyone else seeing none to close?
Seeing no other questions, I will call for the vote.
Question's been called. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Yeah, Councillor Dodick. All right. Now, we're going to go back to, guess what?
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda. So, we started with, before Councillor Dodick was to leave, and we had just one other quick one, so we'll hop back to the consent agenda. From Deputy Mayor Campbell, consent agenda be resolved the minutes of the following meeting of City Council be approved, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same, sign the same, I guess we don't have to seal it, just sign the same. City Council meeting from 10/17/2023. You do see it? It is in the package. Would you like me to read it all out? You're okay if I do? All right. Consent agenda. So, any questions on the consent agenda? Deputy Mayor?
I'm just, I was just going to ask if there's any questions. That's all.
I see none.
I see none.
I will call for the vote.
Question's been called. All in favor? Kerry, thank you. And I have a resolution from closed meeting from Acting Mayor Middleton Hope, City of Lethbridge Strategic Plan 14.1, be resolved that city council directed the closed meeting discussions, documents, and presentation with respect to the City of Lethbridge Strategic Plan remain confidential pursuant to Section 24 advice from officials of the Freedom of Information Protection and Privacy Act, and further be resolved that city council direct administration to proceed with the confidential direction provided in closed session. Councillor Middleton Hope? Acting Mayor Middleton Hope?
Yep. Call a question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Kerry, thank you. Oh, is there, you had a question on that? Oh, you didn't. Nope. Oh. Don't touch. All right. And with that, we are adjourned. Oh. We are adjourned. Thank you.